Well, I can help you with that. We can, if we need to reset to something else, we can. And we'll get to where you're going with this. You can actually run the output again.
Thank you.
If you determine that their appeal is not legally sufficient, they probably file an event.
On record?
Call to order, the City of Lincoln City. This is a special city council meeting of Monday, March 16th, 2020 at 11:45. Roll call, please.
Dick Anderson.
Yes.
Judy Casper.
Here.
Deanna Hinton.
Here.
Riley Hoagland.
Here.
Diane Kooz.
Here.
Rick Mark.
Here.
And Mitch Parsons.
Here.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for coming and attending, and let me remind you and the public that we can make accommodations for audio attendance to these meetings, but I appreciate you coming physically. If the public notes, we've separated even further apart, trying to stay in line with the suggested health recommendations. And the public is certainly welcome. We've separated chairs in the audience as well to keep a distance. Before we get into today's meeting, though, I do need to make an agenda modification and add under Special Orders of Business and Emergency Declaration. If that's all right, we'd make it, I guess, item number two under I. If that's all right? Okay. With that, certainly entertain any public hearing, public comments from anybody present. I don't see anyone raising their hand or signed in. We could then go to Special Order of Business and land use or declaration.
Whichever you'd like to begin with, Mayor.
With Mr. Murphy there.
Okay. Thank you for allowing us to add this Resolution Number 202006 on to the agenda. It is a resolution of the City of Lincoln City declaring an emergency as a result of COVID-19 pandemic. As near as I can tell, and my numbers may not be totally accurate, there are 12 cities in the state that have now declared an emergency. Of course, the state has declared an emergency, and there are 14 counties that have now declared an emergency. The city council, the city council is, has the authority to declare an emergency. I have the authority to declare it for one week, essentially. If I were to declare an emergency, you would have to meet together within seven days to ratify that or nullify that declaration. We have been actually working on this for several weeks, and it seems the pace of things are changing very quickly. For the last two to three weekends, the weekend hasn't gone by without something changing, and now it seems to be changing on a, at least a daily basis, if not more quickly than that. I wanted to give Ken Murphy, who is our emergency preparedness coordinator, an opportunity to talk to you about things that the city has already done, and then, and then present to you this resolution.
Thank you, Ron. Mayor, City Council just hit the wave tops as we go through this. This really started when we had the first case in Oregon. And one of the, the very first thing in our approach that we look at is our continuity of operations plan for the city. And so we met together with department heads and started going over that plan. And probably the key components that we look at this, in this particular situation, is we have the option in the plan to move to another facility, which in this case can be the public workshops and the community center. So again, in this situation, probably the public workshops may be, you know, the better choice. The second is identifying teams of city employees, number one, that are responsible for relocating to another facility and support teams. And then the third piece of this, as we go through this, in this particular case, and this could be true in any kind of disaster, is having remote teams that can work from home or from some other really remote spot. Now, taking a look at the city's mission essential functions is a key component of the continuity of operations plan. And so we took a look at this and agreed upon really looking at, number one, city administration, which includes Mr. Chandler, Mr. Appicello, the executive assistant to Ron, and looking at this from the city administration of keeping things operating. The second area was finance. We need to pay our employees, we need to pay bills and that type of thing. And then the third, in this particular case, and I think this is true in any, we want to keep the wastewater treatment facility and the water treatment facility operating. Very important. So in creating these remote operating teams, we put together laptops. Fortunately, we had a bunch of laptops purchased for our new EOC setting handle available. So our IT department has set up a log me in system onto those laptops. We've issued them to the people, and we're just about done testing. You know, can you actually operate from home? Do you have a Wi-Fi connection? You know, can you access your files on the shared drives that the city maintains? So we have that ability. And then also, along with your laptop, or what we call drive away kits, and it's different for each person. What Ron may take with him to do his job is maybe different than what the wastewater treatment facility. And just to let you know, we can actually run water and wastewater treatment facilities remotely. We do not have to be in the building to make them operate. We also have tested our Everbridge alert system to make sure that we can get a hold of the people. We'll probably conduct some more tests just to make sure that people's phone numbers haven't changed and that type of thing. It's just always a good thing to do each time to test that Everbridge. As Ron said, this is a fast-moving situation. We've tried to have numerous meetings with our department heads and the remote operating teams to talk about what's happening. You're all very well aware of the different things that the federal government has done, Governor Brown has done. And just recently, as of last week, the county made a declaration also for Lincoln County. We watch the daily activities of Oregon Health Authority, how many cases are, where they're at, and, you know, anything that we need to pay attention to in the way of recommendations that they may have. We've taken the time to contact, you know, the healthcare professionals in our community to see what they're doing. I personally called my doctor. What do you want me to do if I have, I'm sick? You know, so he kind of validated for me what the health people were talking about. And I think one of these things is to know, and my experience in working H1N1, is you want to try and prevent panic at a hospital. We had panic during H1N1 with hospitals. They had to shut down. We had to bring in tents and things to do triage in the parking lot. In some cases, we had to have law enforcement protect the facility because people panicked. And we want to try and prevent that from happening here, if at all possible. We're staying in touch with our community partners such as Chinook Winds, different things. Explore Lincoln City is keeping track of different events. We also created, to the best of our knowledge, events, March, April, and May, that we may have to adjust or cancel. That the city has some sort of control or ability. Our next step, of course, is to look at April, or, excuse me, May, June, and July, and as we go into the summer months. And I will say the caveat, when I worked H1N1, it was 179 days long. By the time we've gone through the entire process to get people cured and, you know, and also to get the supply chain back and functioning, it takes time to get all these things that people are using. We've also instructed the staff to keep track of all of their employees' time and any purchases on whatever the case may be, if it's directly related to the virus. With the President's Declaration of a National Emergency, it makes it eligible. We'll see how that trickles down. It's $42 billion. Sounds like a lot of money, but it will go quick. But we are keeping track of that. The other thing, too, that this provides, at least from my standpoint, this is a great training and learning opportunity. Not many times, one of the first things I mentioned to Ron was, what if this was an earthquake? And we didn't have time to talk about this and think through all of this. So this will put us in a position where we can memorialize some things, relate to this experience, because even though it's a virus, there's a lot of equal things that would happen during a disaster. You know, like a flood, earthquake, whatever the case may be. The other thing, too, is we're working with the schools. The schools have caches in our community. Now the kids aren't in school, some of those items can be available. We're going to be taking a look at what they have to see that we might be able to share. And then there's also a system set up in the county and the state that we can possibly order more things. There is a national health stockpile positioned around the country if things become critical, that we should have access to. Now, first priority will be to hospitals, healthcare facilities, and that type of thing. We also, early on, inventoried what we have in our city facilities, like how much toilet paper, how much paper towels, how much hand sanitizer, different things like that. We immediately ask our employees to increase their cleaning routine, and then our maintenance individuals that are for our facilities to increase the cleaning of public surfaces, public areas, doorknobs, handrails, countertops, whatever the case may be, you know, to help ensure that we go through this. Through this process, we've kind of created a, not, it's really supposed to be a decision matrix based on triggers, and this one is odd in the fact that we don't exactly know some of the triggers, other than a case here in the city or the county. But again, it's provided us a list of what we've done and how we're going to approach things. And again, that will help us memorialize what we're going to do. And so our next trigger is obvious. And there could be something else that we don't even know about, but it'll be a case in the county or a case in the city, where we as a city need to take a hard look at what we're doing and how we're going to do it. And I've discussed with Ron on many occasions, you know, that the most important thing is that we remain calm, professional, and think through things before we pull the trigger. You know, one thing, as I think you're all very well aware, is the public will look to the administration of the city, its leaders, and how we react to the event. And so we have to be very mindful of what we do. Now, there are some things closed at the library and the community center that are obvious. I know just from talking to the library and the community center, there's a lot of people that are very happy we've kept some things open. I happen to be with a group of people that swim at the community center all the time, and they just thanked me and thanked me that we could keep that going. So I think, you know, as we take a very hard look at things and a responsible look at how we go to these things and doing the right thing, because we still have a city to operate. And so I think we've done a lot of that in our abilities. We created the draft declaration, you know, for you to look at and consider. It's really about giving the city the ability to do some things if they have to. Doesn't mean we have to, doesn't mean we need to shut all the doors the minute this would be approved, but it gives the city manager, the mayor, and the city council a group of options, you know, to take a look at. Now, there are other things that potentially could go in it, depending upon what situations develop, but this would just be, you know, the, kind of the first set of menu items that we can take a look at that would give the city the ability to react quicker than slower, you know, to do some things to help the city and the citizens and the visitors to our community. So with that, I would stop. We're gonna, one thing else, we're gonna do a daily conference call with department heads. We have a conference line, it's not an in-person meeting. And we're trying to squelch rumors, you know, and trying to make sure people think this through, daily encouragement to the staff, you know, that we're doing everything we can. We've sent out a fair amount of information to our staff to answer questions, you know, how they're going to get paid, what happens if your kids have to stay home from schools are closed, which has now happened. And then we're taking on a case-by-case basis of city employees and their particular instances that they may have concerns with. So I think we've provided that. We'll continue to give them updates. We look at the updates on cases each day. We're at 39 about two hours ago. I haven't checked recently, very fluid. But, so, I will stop at that and turn it back over to Ron and the council.
As was mentioned, we've been working on this for several weeks. Last week, though, I at least detected a significant change, and that was the speed at which things are changing. We were moving on at what I thought was a pretty steady pace of preparation, but then last week, especially when the governor declared an emergency, things became, started moving quite quickly. And so one of the reasons we wanted to bring this before you today is the advantage that it gives us to be able to react a little bit more quickly than we would otherwise because the powers that would then be delegated by the city council. That, to me, is the primary advantage of this declaration of an emergency, is our ability to adapt and to, to act and react if necessary. One of the real challenges that we have faced, that Ken and I have spent a lot of time discussing, is we're not experts in viruses, we're not expert in diseases. How do we base our decisions? And what do we base our decisions on? We have noticed that, that communities, businesses, some of them are basing their decisions on what I think is good, sound counsel. Others are basing it a little bit more on reactionary of what is coming through. We are looking to the Oregon Health Authority and the Lincoln County Health District for direction and guidance, and we're staying in contact with them on, on any actions we may want to take. And then the other thing that, those become really kind of the primary. And then the other thing that Ken mentioned is that we've also developed some triggers that will cause us to, I call it, moving into another stage. The governor's declaration of an emergency, that was a trigger that, that moved us into another stage. Ken mentioned a, if there is a, if there is a confirmed case of the virus happening in Lincoln County, that moves us into another stage. So we're bringing this before you so that we just, so that we have the ability to act and react as things are, seem to be rapidly changing, almost on a daily basis for us now.
And thank you, because that's, that's always the question, why, why now? And what does a declaration, emergency declaration really do? And I think you've summed it up well there. The question I would have, and for the public, is fiscal controls. You know, what, what happens on a fiscal impact? We still operate as a city with a budget.
We do. There is some loosening up of the requirements. Some of our purchasing policy requirements are loosened up, where we don't have to go out and obtain the, go through the bidding process as much as possible. It does say in it that the resources, necessary resources will go forward with that. It does not loosen up some of our budgetary requirements. So the, the real significant change in, as far as fiscally goes, is that it does loosen up the, some of the purchasing requirements.
Questions? Counselor, hand.
Mine's just more of a, for those at home that may be watching or watching later, could you just, we heard about how the city is reacting to a potential situation where this would be implemented. And I appreciate that, all that work in the past and in the future. It's very well done so far. But how will this affect those of, the people who aren't in City Hall? I mean.
Residents, you mean, they're just people that are living in town?
Yeah, citizens and visitors and how, I mean, I can read it here, but they don't have that in front of them now, so.
Yeah. Do you want to address that?
Yeah, Counselor, I think, you know, as we go through this, and the message that I would recommend to the public is, number one, if we do this declaration, this really allows the city, the mayor, the council, the city manager, to be able to address the situation a little bit quicker than normal. And this also puts into place, as we continue, to make sure that we have done everything we possibly can within our authorities and the municipal code to take care of our employees and to do what we can to preserve normal functions of the city. You know, so I think, you know, for the residents, it may not necessarily be 100% noticeable, but I think it reminds them that as a city, we're still gonna do normal fiscal responsibility, taking care of streets and, you know, parks, you know, and recreation as much as we can based upon what the virus is doing. And this just simply gives the leadership of Lincoln City other options to address things if they get extremely serious or we have a case here in the county. And another thing, too, I think we need to be prepared for is some of these little, maybe not so significant triggers, but they are significant to different parts of our community, like they're talking about the governor of Washington has closed restaurants and bars and things like that. So that, you know, that talk is going around every state and every place, you know. So those are other little triggers to take a look at that we need to be prepared for.
Some of the things that the resolution specifically gives us the authority to do is that we can cancel events, which as far as city events, we have already been, we've already been doing that. But it also, we can cancel events for which people apply for a permit. We can restrict, we can limit the gatherings, the number of persons that may be, the gathering, as we're already seeing, that has been done by the state. We can restrict pedestrian, vehicular traffic as they're coming into public places. And one that it gives us is the ability to curtail or suspend commercial activity. Now, this is one I kind of want to discuss just a little bit on this one. We have been getting questions about, from businesses, about what we should do. And our response has been, look to the groups like the Oregon Health Authority, look to the experts for that. We do very well on knowing how to run a city. I don't know that I would do very well on knowing how to run a restaurant or another business. So we have been very, very hesitant in trying to give advice to people on how to, what they should do with their own businesses. I think that is a good policy, it's one we would maintain. But we have been also saying, here's the authorities we're looking to, to help us with those decisions. So we, that's part of the message that we have been trying to give out to people. Interestingly enough, I did have a business who was, they were considering closing. And, and I said, you're not asking me, right? And they said, no, but we are watching. Will City Hall close? That's a big, that for them was a trigger. So right now, we have not closed any facilities. The community center remains open, although we have, we have canceled some of the programming. The library remains open, except however, it is at a delayed start this morning because we've had some staff that were not able to come in. They're part of the vulnerable groups, and so they, they're taking some leave time off. So we're already starting to see a little bit of effects on that. We don't necessarily have plans at this point. Tomorrow night might be interesting. Our planning commission, some of our commissioners have said they are not going to come, which means we would not have a quorum. We, in order to conduct business, we do, however, have the ability to, as the mayor had mentioned, conduct meetings remotely. And so that the slide shows, the discussions can all take place. And so that, that option is available. It's available to our planning commission, it's available to our city council.
If I could just add one on the list, is also price gouging is prohibited. I just want to say that out loud or have someone say that. We, we aren't, all the toilet paper off the shelves doesn't come back at, you know, on a stand, on a cart, let's say, for $2 a roll? That's not going to happen.
True.
Counselor.
I'll wait, I'll wait.
Counselor, Mark?
I, just a couple idle thoughts. I heard two days ago that a case had been, of corona virus had been reported in Lincoln County. Is it a Samaritan hospital? I didn't know if it was supposed to be reported in Lincoln City. And then I was keeping an eye on the official state report, and it never appeared. So I'm wondering about a mechanism for squelching rumors of that type.
Isn't there coronavirus, is there, we, did you attend that conference call with the LOC? And then they were saying, so there was, a few days ago on, I don't know what day it's today. I don't know, but it was a conference call with the LOC, the League of Oregon Cities.
Friday or Thursday?
I think it was Friday. I attended the.
Right, and so they were saying that there are websites that you can attend to, you know, that do have up-to-date, I think it was, I'll have to look. Let me look and find it and then say, but it will give you real-time tracking and all that. And then the state has been really well putting it, what counties have it, at what total information? So, and we're talking with the casino as well, in addition to the school district. Is that, because that's a huge thing. If people see the casino closed, then that's a big deal. Because that, remember in 2007, when that 120 miles, it was the only place in town that was open. So they are looked at as a source of, you know, community as well. So I hope that we're talking with them.
Absolutely, Counselor. I went to the casino Saturday.
Yeah.
After I had, you know, saw Counselor Mark LaRocca. And they had really a good regiment of cleaning, the machines. There was plenty of hand sanitizer, not only inside the building, but outside the building. I know I took my vehicle to Valet Parking, and they had the little packs of Purcell hand wipes. And, yeah, we've talked to them fairly consistently. I just got a notice from them, they are canceling their spring break party on March 21st. But they, they have been very good at making sure that the public and everybody knows that they're open for business. And we talked to the schools quite often. I know Counselor Hinton had asked about food for the kids. They've come up with a plan in being able to distribute food to the children using the buses, the first student bus system. So I think a lot of people are, you know, taking a good, hard look at this, and they know what the important things are, you know. know what the important things are, you know, to our parents and our citizens and the public, so I think they're on the right track.
And I think a couple things. One, childcare certainly has a huge impact, which throws a wrench into the equation. The other, to Counselor Mark, your concern, I think is valid. I think it's, as we hear things, we have to be diligent of getting people to, you know, verify their rumor, and it's too easy to spread that kind of stuff. So, just simply asking for, where did you see that, hear that, and if it's not one of the official sources, that we need to push people to the official...
Maybe, maybe we could publicize or post somewhere, here, here's where you get to the official word, the latest word.
I'm trying to get it right here. I've been on it, I just haven't...
Well, even if we put it maybe on the city, prominently on the city website with a link.
There's a link to a link to a link.
Yeah. I will just say, you know, we can do some checking. I will, and I'm sure you know this, or it's obvious, cases that start are quite controlled. There's no public information initially. It's an issue between the patient, the hospital, and county health. And until they go through a process, and right now, the process really boils down to if there is a presumptive case, they're gonna contact Ron, and they're gonna contact the chief of police and myself and let us know. So, other than that, anything else is a rumor. And I might add, there's a lot of malware going around right now with the coronavirus, so be cautious, use good sense in what you click on.
One of the links that we have on our own webpage is the link to the Health and Human Services for the county, and I just pulled that up, updated as of 9:30 a.m. Tests have been conducted by Lincoln County doctors, and all have come back negative so far. This means there are zero confirmed cases of the CO, of the COVID-19 in Lincoln County.
Could we, talking about sharing information, even this resolution gets passed, to put it up for the public to see and read?
Yes.
And I don't know the technologies of that, of it, certainly the website, but if there's a way to hook it somehow to Facebook or let the Facebookers know that it exists so they could read it themselves in some kind of comfort level, yeah, Ron's report and...
We could put it on all of our different social media, all of our electronics.
Blanket, all the departments.
Yeah. Yeah, and we'll send it to the meeting, so.
Yeah, I mean, just because it's, it's gonna be easier.
Let them read it, and it's cool. Other questions?
I, okay.
Can you give me an example of what might trigger some of the more extreme things like the curfew or restricting people's travel? Just an idea, I know that's gonna work some people up.
I can tell you my experience I had with H1N1. Restricting travel really becomes, if you have a large amount of cases and it becomes uncontrolled, there's the possibility of restricting travel from people going. Federal government right now is looking at restricting domestic flights. You know, if you were to fly from here to Boise, Idaho, you may not be able to do that here in the future, and taking a look at that. Curfew, that's really to get the public to stay home instead of going to the hospital in the middle of the night because you didn't think it was busy, you know, and that type of thing. And I don't know, this is a rumor, when I went to Safeway this weekend to look at the empty aisles, I talked to the manager a little bit, and he said they had to stop a couple of people in the parking lot from stealing stuff out of people's carts, you know, because they wanted, they had toilet paper. And so, I think curfew can be a fairly extreme measure because people think their rights are being taken away from them, but, you know, a lot of that becomes something that is really about the safety and the protection of our citizens.
Obviously, the items that we're considering at this time, all, well, all of the items we're really considering at this time pertain to the continuity of our operations, continuing our operations, and what would trigger the city hall to close, or what would trigger the community center to close? Those are the areas that our focus has really been at this time.
And one more, just kind of looking into the future, what decides an end to the state of emergency? Or do we, when, okay, we have triggers for all these things, what triggers do we have to end the state of emergency?
The duration is specified as, right now, ending on April 8th, but it's subject to extensions. I think we'll take our lead from the state on the duration.
That's exactly right. We've tied it with the state of declaration.
Perfect.
And in terms of our, there's nothing in our code about the right to travel. We do have a provision in our authority, emergency authority, about restricting people from entering certain areas. That's the kind of, if there were a number of, you know, infections at a certain location, like, you know, as...
The current issue with rest homes.
...Washington, we would prohibit people going in that area. That's, that's the kind of exercise we would do.
Counselor?
I just was, the test kits and test site locations that I heard in the presidential address, you know, I don't know if that's something that, you know, I, they had the CEOs of the different businesses up there, and we have Walgreens out of the four that were there. So, is that something that is in the, being looked at of doing, or from the city level, trying to coordinate traffic? Because it already is a tight, that specific area is very tight already with those businesses there, and trying to put 1,000 cars in that area is probably not gonna work. So, how does that look for us here if we're at that stage of getting take-home tests and drop-offs?
I would just add, counselor, right now, to the best of my knowledge, we've not been contacted, and I'm pretty sure we may not be first in the contact list, you know, because these corporations are gonna do things a little bit different, whether it's a Walgreen, a Target, a Walmart, all the CEOs at the presidential announcement, you know, had talked about, you know, we're gonna do whatever's necessary. But I think maybe proactively, I could reach out to Walgreens and just say, if this happens, we're here to help and work with you, and probably McDonald's, and probably, in this case, Pigg and Pancake, because you're all in that little traffic spot right there. And even the, you know, the Lincoln City Police Department, how that could control...
I would just like to, if it gets to that point, maybe we could talk to the property owner of the old across the corner there at the Lighthouse Square and have it in a better area.
Aging area.
Yeah, thank you. That we're looking to, you know.
Absolutely.
At that time, if it's...
Yeah, I might point out, and I don't have all the information, and I apologize, but Dr. Ogden, Leslie Ogden, has got a, this Friday with the chamber is doing...
Speech.
A speech, audio. I'm not sure how, whether it's Facebook or what the means is, where she would certainly be updating from the medical community's aspects. I would suggest you check with the chamber office to get the specifics and plug yourself in to help educate.
Taking that another step further, could that also be something that could be redirected somehow on our sites?
Channel four?
On our, you know, so that it can be put out there?
Might be.
So, that way, it's, at least the audio that people could get to that.
Good point.
It is a little complicating sometimes to register online webinars in a way, you know, and just making...
We got a lot of people not online in our community, too.
Well, that's a good point, and maybe tie into the radio, I don't know, you know, just as much as possible, try to facilitate it all.
Other questions? With that, I'd certainly take a motion on Resolution 2020-06.
Make, I'd like to make that motion.
Go ahead.
To, to make that...
Approve it.
Yeah.
To approve the resolution?
To approve the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion to approve from Counselor Hoagland and a second from Counselor Hinton. Roll call, please, or any discussion, any further discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Anderson?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Hoagland?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
And Parsons?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Murphy, for bringing it all forward and helping us better understand. Could we then move to our others under special business, land use appeal?
Your honor, counsel, this is, it's a decision on whether or not to reject or accept an appeal. I don't really see this decision as being discretionary. I, I see it more as rather matter-of-fact. Your code has mandatory language. It says, you know, shall contain in two different places with respect to what an appeal shall contain, and the subject appeal does not contain that. Now, again, I don't really see it as a interpretation of our own code, but we could have had the planning director simply determine that the appeal was not valid, but we're giving it to you since it's your, an appeal to you from the planning commission. I can, I can tell you that at least, there are Aluba cases on this issue, and if I could find where it was on my screen. Basically, Aluba has said that where a local government's code makes certain local appeal requirements jurisdictional or mandatory prerequisites to filing or maintaining an appeal, such code provisions authorize planning staff to reject or dismiss a local appeal that does not satisfy those requirements. I think staff, planning and legal staffs telling you, we have an applicant who did not raise an issue before the planning commission, yet filed an appeal. One of the requirements for appeal of the planning commission decision to the council is that you identified wherein the planning commission you raised this issue. It's why the chair says, raise it or waive it. So, we're asking counsel to determine that the appeal does not meet the requirements for an appeal and summarily dismiss it.
Discussion.
And I deliberately didn't tell you who.
Right.
That was my question.
I mean, it doesn't sound like there's discussion.
I was gonna say, it doesn't sound like there is any to have.
So, with that, then entertain a motion?
Make a motion to summarily, geez, I can't talk today, reject the appeal consistent with counsel's interpretation of its own code as set forth in Option 1.
And I actually wrote that. I, I don't really think you're really interpreting the code, I think you're just applying it, but in case someone wants to argue that it's being interpreted, you're the legislative body, you would get deference, so.
Seconds.
We have a motion to dismiss with, from Counselor Parsons, and a second from Counselor Casper. Again, any discussion, clarifications? Roll call, please.
Casper?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Hoagland?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
And Anderson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great. Any other comments from the public? Hearing none, seeing none, any business? Mr. City Manager?
No, sir.
City Attorney? Counsel, questions? Okay, let's call it a end of the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have urban renewal next.